... wisdom as we work to serve you and the citizens of Bowling Green. It's in your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call a roll.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Do we have any awards and recognitions tonight?
I do not.
Anyone from the commission? All right, you have comments for us.
Yes, Mayor. Three items. The first, I'd like to announce to the public, and the commissioner already knows this, that we were approached by Kelly Arnold of Gemini Homes about developing property on Cherry Drive. Mr. Arnold has rescinded his offer, so unless the commission has a different feeling on the matter, we consider this project closed.
Thank you.
The second item, there'll be a need, there's going to be a late file involving the annexation along Louisville Road later on in the agenda.
Motion to add that late file?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Paragon. Is any discussion?
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Finally, there'll be a need for a very brief executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 628101C for discussions of proposed litigation on behalf of the city related to the Tiff Block Six matter.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That all, sir? First item is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on July 18, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Is there any additions, deletions, or discussion? Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-28.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing approximately 1.97 acres from HB Highway Business, LI Light Industrial, and UG Urban Growth Overlay to HI Highway Business and LI Light Industrial, removing the property from the Lover's Lane Overlay District located on a portion of 2398 Scottsville Road, presently owned by Disisit LLC.
So moved.
Nash, second. Is there any discussion? This was a unanimous recommendation from Planning Commission. Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-29.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 2.0189 acres from CB Central Business and PUD Planned Unit Development to PUD Planned Unit Development, located at 700 and 705 State Street, presently owned by New Millennium Real Estate LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Again, a second reading and a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Wes Bean.
Yes, sir.
Bean. This property, does it include the house directly behind just a little square?
Just the square that's currently kind of torn up and gravel. Yeah, not the house.
And what are we going to put on that property?
It's essentially the same footprint that was previously approved by the Planning Commission, but now it's just being added as part of the plan you develop, Plan Unit Development, known as the view, thank you. And so it's going to be mixed-use retail and apartments.
And the developer is looking to put how many buildings and apartments on that section? The reason I ask, of course, you know, I don't know a whole lot about anything, just doesn't seem as a very big lot for a whole lot to go on. I'm just trying to educate myself.
Okay, so give me just a second here to find how many units. In regard to the parking, so in our downtown, specifically Central Business District, which is essentially what this is in, there are no parking requirements in the Central Business District. It's a combination of on-street parking and some off-street parking. So there are 12 off-street parking spaces that are proposed with this, as well as the 17 on-street parking that is currently planned with the view, and then the view itself will have parking as well, and then, of course, we have our downtown parking garage.
Just fill me in on the buildings. How many apartments? How many of these? And so on.
Okay. Let me see here. So we have, if you look on page 10 to 14 of the staff report, it'll show the view, which is, was the first part of the planning and development, and then the little rectangle, which would be Building D, that would be part of just this piece of property that was added. And I believe there are 14 units that are going to be proposed in that building for a total of 71, I'm sorry, 30, yeah, 71 units total for between the two, the two properties now. Potentially, that's what they're got, up to that amount of units.
What is that going to do, the numbers, specific numbers, and the parking to Seventh Street? What is the traffic numbers going to do as far as increasing? We're right there on a corner, and I know you've already got it planned out. Everything is going to be going to the right from the project. How much traffic, how many cars extra are you anticipating at that one corner?
If you look at the interior parking circulation there, you'll, they would basically enter in off that public alley that kind of goes mid-block there. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, they would enter in off of Seventh, but then they would exit through that public alley and go, which I believe empties out onto Eighth Street there. So that it would be one-way traffic flow, and you'd be entering in only off of Seventh. Would be entrance only, you wouldn't be able to allow to exit onto Seventh if you are in those, one of those interior parking spaces.
And the owner of this development is also the owner of the development right across the street?
Sir.
For our information, a lot of times, I realize that a corporate entity, corporate entity is, and only in itself, but do we have other documents to let us know who the individual participants are in a specific project?
Yes, as part of our application, an application process, they are required to list, if it's an LLC or corporation, whatever, but they're, they have to list those principal owners, and then additionally, we check for those on the Secretary of State's website whenever we, whenever we evaluate the application.
Do we see that as a city commission?
I'm not sure what all we send you as far as our packets. If we just send you the staff report and the minutes, I don't know if we send you our entire file, but we can't stop doing that.
No, and I don't want the entire file.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, well, the application, it's that, that information specifically on our application, but we can certainly add, start adding that if that's, if that's not in your packet.
I would like for that to be added. I'd just like to know, regardless of where they at or where they from, I would like to know the names, you know, Jesse James, John Doe, or whatever. I want to know who it is. Second of all, in your document, and I'm sure I can be correct at somewhere or another, I would like, for my reading, and for my reading only, that when we receive from Planning and Zoning a developer request, I would like to see somewhere to the front, the proposal is, how would, word it ever, how you want it. This proposal is requesting from the developer to build 35 apartments, break it down, two, three, four-bed rooms, I don't care, but somewhere near the front, as far as the cover, let me know upfront what's going to take place.
I understand.
I don't want to have to go back to page 36, and it tells me, this proposal is requesting the 34 apartments be built on this property.
Understood. We'll start doing a summary page for you.
What else am I concerned about? That helps me.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-30.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 43.74 acres from LI Light Industrial and F Flood Plane to HI Heavy Industrial and F Flood Plane, located on Louisville Road, presently owned by Raleigh and Gibby Shelton, with Southern Recycling LLC as contract vendor.
I'm on, second.
By Dunning, second by Williams. Again, a second reading with the recommendation from planning and zoning, nine yays, two, two additional people abstained, so there's no, no votes on this one. Is there any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-31.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way, ordinance approving the closing of two unnamed alleys located on the property of 1010 State Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Let's see, this is also a second reading of the ordinance, unanimous vote for planning and zoning, but this is to make sure that the alley doesn't run as it is currently through the current building, at the old Sears Building. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-32.
Ordinance annexing property by consent, ordinance annexing a total of approximately 13.07 acres of property located at 5800 Scottsville Road, with property presently owned by VGF Investments LLC, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits, and further approving an associated economic development annexation incentive agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. This is a second reading, again, of our own annexation, welcoming people into the community. Is any further comments or discussion? Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-33.
Ordinance annexing property by consent, ordinance annexing 33.87 acres of property located at 1854 Three Springs Road, parcel number 042A-51, presently owned by the estate of Owen Sims, and 12.48 acres of Interstate 65 right-of-way, for a total of 46.35 acres, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits, and further approving an associated economic development annexation incentive agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Nash, second. It's the second reading. Was there a comment regarding annexation? Okay, hearing none, please, or any other further discussion? Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning? Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-27.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.2296 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1318 Nutwood Street, presently owned by Brian Todd Utley.
Second.
Second by, asked, the, we voted on this the last time at 1318 Nutwood Street, and just like planning and zoning, it was a two-to-two tie, but Commissioner Dunning wasn't here. In order to just make sure that we follow the same protocol, do the positive vote first, and then if it fails, then we go to the negative vote. But because we had the second reading, this now starts over as a refile and becomes a first reading. This one, again, came from planning and zoning with no recommendation, because they've also voted to tie. Is there any comments or discussion? I know we talked about it just a little bit before on the last time, but this is the one that had the long, narrow lot that was adding, going from duplex to fourplex, I believe it was, what it was. Yes, ma'am?
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So a, a yay is denied.
No, sir. That's why I put it on positive to negative, so we'd know what we're voting on the first time. So this is-
Play it to me again.
Okay, so this, this would be the first reading, which means we're starting over again, that we would be approving, changing the zoning from RM3 to RM4 on this 1318 Nutwood Street.
I have a question.
Did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Are you done?
Not, well, not really.
All right.
Win the same vote we did last time.
I yield to whoever's next.
I think Sue's next.
I just wanted to ask, ask Ben, just, just one more time. I know that I'm beating this-
It's okay.
-dead horse, but I want to be sure, because not allowing somebody to develop is not, you know, not good. But this is the similar situation to what you saw in Cherry Way, very similar, it just sounded mirror image, that the commission denied.
Right.
Okay. And there were, there were, somebody showed up from the neighborhood on that Cherry Way thing.
Cherry Way, yeah.
And then this, over on Nutwood, very same sort of situation, the, the Planning Commission was in a dead, a dead heat. I guess I'm wondering why that was. And, and I know you can't answer for the commissioners, I know that.
Unless they expressed it in their, in their comments during the meeting.
Right. Because, because what happened here was somebody said, isn't this just like the Cherry Way?
Right. That was pretty much the only comment on this particular item.
Right, right. Okay. I just feel like we have to follow a consistent plan. That's just my, that's my two cents worth, that, you know, there is always going to be a little bit of subjectivity. But it didn't, anyway. Thank you. Sorry.
My question's more about process and less about affirmative or negative on the vote. Why did we bring, why did you bring this back for a first reading again?
So that we'd follow the same protocol. If, if you notice, the, I sent out a copy of the last planning and zoning meeting, and they were very confused about what they're voting on. So we're trying to follow the positive vote, means it's an approval, and then the negative vote would mean, then the next one would be the negative vote. So we're voting to approve the zoning for this property in a positive manner first, and then if it fails, then we go to the second vote. Just, just trying to get process so that nobody's confused, like, I think planning and zoning got confused at the last meeting.
Wait, no, you asked the same thing I'm asking.
I thought we already voted on this once, and it was voted down.
It didn't pass.
Because it was on the second reading, we had a tie. Got it. Got it.
You weren't here on the, on the vote, so-
I looked at it, and I was confused when I looked at it.
Yeah. The, the vote was a tie.
Right.
Because it was a second reading, we have to start over fresh on a positive vote. I asked for it to put on there so that we could follow the same protocol, positive and then negative.
I'm opposed to it. So which way do I vote? Please tell me.
You vote no.
You vote no.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Please call a roll.
Ash?
No.
Paragon?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Vote fails on the first reading of that ordinance, so if the next, the next one is the denial, and it's the second reading of a denial, so your vote to match what you did the first time will be a no. I mean, a yes.
It'll be a yes.
That's when I was asking all the questions I was asking.
He over here cooking the books.
Yeah.
And I'm reading it here, I was getting confused.
So if I understand this complicated ordinance, my vote this time would be yes.
That's correct.
Because I voted no on all of them.
This is a vote of denial.
Okay.
You might want to write that down.
Yeah, I will.
Write, write that one.
Big government, wonderful.
Okay, so go ahead and read the second reading, which is ordinance 202017-35.
Ordinance denying rezoning of real estate, ordinance denying rezoning of tracks of land containing 0.2296 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential, located at 1318 Nutwood Street, presently owned by Brian Todd Utley.
So moved.
Second.
Nash, second. By Paragon. I don't think we want to discuss it any further, so we don't confuse anybody. Everybody know what your vote's going to be. Please call a roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
No.
So let me just clarify-
We will not, we will not have the second reading of the first ordinance that we read.
Correct. We have now resolved this issue. You have approved by majority vote to deny the rezoning, so we cannot have now the other-
Correct.
-ordinance back on the agenda. So we, that issue is now closed.
Next one up is a table first reading. Did you want to pull that off the table, or you want to move on to the item number 10?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to leave that on the table.
So we'll go to item number 10, which is first reading of ordinance number BG 2017-36.
Ordinance admitting code of ordinances, ordinance admitting Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances to make revisions to Subchapter 15-6, storage, sale, and use of fireworks related to educational requirements and enforcement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. This one is sponsored by, no, ma'am.
No.
The sponsor is both of you, so who wants to go first?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Unless, Slim, you okay to follow?
Okay. The original idea behind our fireworks, or our move to work on the fireworks ordinance was to make something a little bit enforceable with what we had. This new provision that we're bringing up tonight keeps our current fireworks ordinance in place. We're not changing, we're not changing any of the penalties, we're not changing any of the guidelines, any of that. We're adding some language that will hopefully make it somewhat enforceable for our police department. When they show up on a scene, answering a call about fireworks being used inappropriately, we'll have the ability to cite at that point. We're also adding some language that requires the vendors to help in educating the purchasers of fireworks as to the proper methods that they can use, the days and the times that fireworks can legally be shot inside the city limits of Bowling Green, Kentucky. So that, in a nutshell, that's all we're doing.
We're not, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Do you got a question? I'll listen.
So technically, we're not banning anything that was already on ordinance number one?
No, sir. No, there's no banning of anything.
So why we have ordinance tonight? I mean, if we're not banning anything, why are we here tonight pertaining to fireworks?
We're only adding the language that allows the police department to, to cite without actually seeing the fireworks being lit, and that's only under certain circumstances. And, and along with that, requiring that the fireworks vendors distribute the, the rules about our fireworks ordinance to people who purchase fireworks from them.
I certainly have no problem with that, but it's been such a big issue in Bowling Green, Warren County, and Allen County, and everywhere else surrounding us pertaining to fireworks. I just want to be clear myself on what we're doing. Now, one part that you did mention that is a part of this ordinance that I do have problems with, having been in law enforcement in two capacities, I have a problem being in the office and me going to a scene, and just because the kids are in the vicinity, and I know they've been shooting fireworks at, but I didn't see them shoot the fireworks. Could've been a little buster down the street that had shot the firework trash that I'm seeing down there on the ground. Joe Dunning, a Bowling Green police officer, Joe Dunning, a Kentucky state trooper. I'm going to ask some questions, but I'm going to arrest that kid. I am not going to arrest that kid because I didn't see the kid do it. So help me out. I mean, two sides to everything. I didn't see the kid do it. I'm not going to write that kid a citation, because more than anything takes place, in my opinion, afterwards. I could be putting that kid in a position that will follow him or her the rest of their life in the court system. I don't want that. I don't want anything to even come close to that. So help me out.
The, the kid, in your scenario, or an adult, no one would be arrested.
Okay.
They would only be issued a citation, and their fireworks would be confiscated. They would then have their day in court as to whether or not a judge finds that they were guilty of it. Again, it's, it's a citation, it's not an arrestable offense. We're not talking about putting adults or minors in the juvenile detention center or the Warren County Regional Jail over fireworks. What we're trying to do is create an environment where those who enjoy shooting off fireworks can do so, and those who live within the city limits and live within the laws as they exist by the state, not by the city, can cohabitate with one another. One of the number-one complaints that I heard when it came to enforcement, so in talking with police officers, was that they didn't have the tools necessary to enforce the ordinance, and the fine that would be leveled against somebody was not significant enough to deter them from lighting off the fireworks as soon as they left, meaning that if somebody went out and spent a couple hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars on fireworks, and then they were issued a citation for $50, that it was still worth it to shoot off those fireworks later and just pay your fine and move on. What this particular ordinance does is, if the officer believes that, and I want to read the wording exactly, because I kept saying probable cause, and I, if the presumption exists that the fireworks are being used, ignited, fired, or exploded in violation of this chapter, which would be the 200-foot rule, 200 foot from a person, a car, or a building, then the officer would issue a citation. Nobody would be arrested, and they would confiscate those fireworks as part of the evidence to support the citation.
Can I ask a follow-up there?
Sure.
I understand that the citation is a misdemeanor, which is a criminal offense, and it puts you in the court system, so it gives you, if upheld, a record. Am I wrong, or?
Got some returnees out there.
Understand, there may have been some confusion in newspaper articles as well. Let me make it clear, the penalty section has not been changed since 2011. It remains the same today as it was then. There is a misdemeanor section in the ordinance, but it deals with sellers, people who store fireworks, people who do the displays. If they violate any of the provisions of the ordinance, they can be subject to a misdemeanor, which means jail time and fines as well, too. I think we did this in 2011, we thought, particularly due to the fact that firework dealers are transients and-
dealers are transient, they're not here very often, you know, two or three weeks a year, they would be better to keep those in the criminal process with misdemeanors to make sure they comply. The actual use violations of the fireworks ordinance has never been a misdemeanor. It is a criminal offense, but it's a citation with a fine, with this thing being classified as a violation. The state statutes put the maximum fine for violations at $250. It is not an arrestable offense. Nobody goes to jail for these. You do have to either pay the $250, well, whatever fine that the court imposes, you have to pay that, or you can contest it, just like speeding tickets and everything else. If you choose to go to district court and contest them, you can, but it is not a jailable offense, you're not gonna be hauled off that night, you know, and I want to speak for the chief, they might haul, you know, if somebody does other things, you know, disorderly conduct and other things, that's gonna be a different issue, but for simple violations of the use of fireworks, it's been the same language since 2011, it's a violation, and it's not a misdemeanor, and the maximum fine is $250 and no jail time.
Let me... One other thing. Okay, it's not a misdemeanor, but it is criminal. And so in such, they... So if it is a citation like a speeding ticket, we don't take their car in a speeding ticket, we don't take their car for a citation like a parking ticket, or, you know, the smoking ordinance kind of comes to play here. You know, sometimes there were people that ran businesses that decided to take the chance and let smoking go on and take the fine. It was a citation.
Well, I may want to defer to Chief Hawkins, let him stand up here, but I think his position would be if a police officer cites someone for illegally using fireworks, either on a wrong day, on the wrong time, or within the 200-foot rule, I think it's their plan that they're going to confiscate it for a couple of reasons. One, they need it for evidence, if they do take it to trial in district court, they need it for evidence. And two, I think the position would be if these things, if the fireworks are illegally being used, I think they're gonna take the position they have to take them. They can't leave those materials back in the hands of people to be used maybe again because they found them, basically illegally using those fireworks. You gotta let me, the chief, me do a better job of answering that question than I just did, since he's a police officer and I'm not.
But Gene, isn't that because it's a criminal violation, not a civil violation, correct?
I've read the, I guess, the proposed language, and the way that I view it from a police officer's standpoint is if the possession, under certain circumstances, becomes the violation, right, that's what we're citing for, is the possession in the presence of the evidence of fireworks having been discharged, then the possession becomes the violation. And if the possession is the violation, we have to take the evidence of the violation to support the charge. Does that make sense?
Because it's a criminal violation, not a civil. That's what I understood from a...
Well, yeah, obviously, we only engage in criminal violations, so if we do that, we have to provide evidence to the court to support the criminal charge, even if it's a violation. And so, yes, it would be our intention to confiscate the illegal, at that time, the illegal fireworks that justified the citation to begin with.
I got one more thing, if that's possible, because I'm gonna say that I like what you're trying to do. I'm just not sure, because we have not heard, and we've posed the question to Amy several times, can we redefine use, and will that hold up in court, or is that something that she is... Maybe Gene can speak to that.
Well, I think we talked about a couple weeks ago, the state statute authorizes cities to enact ordinances dealing with the use and sale of fireworks. They didn't have the magic word possession. So trying to, I guess, resolve what I was asked to try to draft, I did, I tried to broaden the use of the term, the word "use," and basically came up with language that, you know, unless, I don't think we can simply outlaw possession, but I kind of drafted language and said, hey, if somebody's got fireworks inside their vehicle, that's okay. If they got fireworks inside their house, that's okay. If they're transporting them from their vehicle to their house, or reverse, that's okay. But if they've got them outside and are not transporting them, and as your chief said, you see evidence everywhere else, a little blown-up firecrackers and everything else, then under this ordinance, we created a presumption that those fireworks were being used in violation of the ordinance. The fact that you see them outside and evidence that they were being used, again, creates a presumption of use of the fireworks in violation of the ordinance, giving the police department then the ability to cite illegally used fireworks.
So we've added more than what state law says. Is that what you just said? In other words, we've added some little touches that puts an individual in more jeopardy than state law.
But state law says the cities do have the ability to regulate the use of fireworks. What we did, we just, I added an additional definition of "use."
So what in the history of fireworks in Bowling Green has brought about a need to add more to the penalties than what is already there? And...
I'm listening.
Yeah. I guess what concerns me is that this is something that all of us have done in this room since 1776, if they had firecrackers back then.
They were Chinese.
Oh, were they?
That's who created the fireworks.
Okay, okay.
Nothing in 1776.
I set a little field on fire one night down right across the street from 509 Kentucky Street.
Let's hope the statute of limitations has worn out.
Yeah, I hope so. I didn't go to jail, but what we are creating here, I believe, is a situation to where if someone called on me, I'd probably still be in jail. I guarantee you, I'd still be in jail. So I'm like, see, I am not interested in doing anything anymore than what is reasonable because the majority of the ones that are gonna be caught are gonna be youngsters, kids, they're not gonna be no 60, 65-year-olds, and it just bothers me that firecrackers today at this city hall have become a search and issue. And all of us, the ones that are complaining and calling, I live on Eastwood, if you want to see a good fireworks display, big ones and little ones, come over and sit with me. I look at it all the time. And while I'm sitting out there looking at it, people are calling me on the phone, Joe, they done it again. They shooting firecrackers over here. I wish y'all would do something down there at city hall, do something. Come on up to my house, watch them shoot.
So it wouldn't apply to firecrackers? So there are...
What about sparklers? The person set a fire?
Wouldn't apply to sparklers. Fireworks are defined into three classes, and this gets complicated, but I'll do my best and hope people will jump in if I go wrong. But Class A fireworks are more of what novelty fireworks, firecrackers, sparklers, pinwheel, yeah, what I call pinwheels.
And the 200-foot doesn't even apply to those.
The 200-foot rule doesn't come into that. So the things that kids are most likely to use aren't, isn't in here. It's those fireworks that you light and shoot up into the air that have more explosiveness to them and have the ability of reaching other people's property.
Well, we banned them.
Pardon me?
Why don't we ban them? Why don't we ban the big boys? And let the kids go on and do the little things?
Because I'm interested in a compromise, and I don't think three people will agree with me on that. Or you and I. Are you on board with banning them?
I'm on board for not having this same discussion every year pertaining to firecrackers.
I understand that. I understand that. And so what I thought, what I have heard over and over again is that this is an issue of enforcement, is that the ordinance does not give the police department the tools, the police department the tools that they need to be able to enforce it because there is the requirement that the officer must see the person lighting the fuse.
I agree.
And so this was an attempt to address that issue, allow the retailers to continue to sell all the explosives that the state deems as legal, not including the fireworks that kids are most likely to have, but I would point out that kids shouldn't have them because the law says that it shouldn't, not a law you and I created or anybody here created, but the state created. And this was an attempt to... I believe that the long-term effect of this is if someone's fireworks are confiscated, if they buy more fireworks, they will follow the law, or they take the risk of the expense, again, of losing the fireworks that they purchased. And so when you said that we've increased the penalties, we've not touched the penalty section in any way whatsoever. The only thing that we've done is given the police officer discretion, which I think as a police officer, you would agree that, you know, former police officers need discretion all the time. We've included the word about presumption as to whether or not somebody is shooting off fireworks, and we have given the officer the ability to confiscate those fireworks in support of the citation. And the citation, the person goes to court, and they have their day in court. A judge may throw out every one of them. A judge may not, but that's the process that we have. I mean, you want to talk about 1776, that's the process we have in America, is that we don't allow a police officer on the scene to be judge and jury. We allow a police officer on the scene, in this case, to determine whether or not there's a presumption that somebody is doing something that's in violation of the law. They issue a citation, they confiscate the fireworks, that person goes to court, and a court determines, an impartial party, not a police officer, not me or you, but a judge who is impartial, sworn to be impartial, makes a determination about that.
Okay, let's start off with the belief, and I know it's gonna make it come out funny or something. We can have, right here, working with Chief Hawkins, the 82nd Airborne, the 101st Airborne, and I guarantee wouldn't be enough people here in Bowling Green with those three forces to take care of people shooting firecrackers. Our community might as well realize they gonna continue, they gonna happen, and law enforcement is not going to catch everyone.
I don't believe that this ordinance is designed to catch everyone. This ordinance is designed, like most laws, and that is to deter people who want to break the law from doing so. So we can't catch every speeder, we can't catch every violation of every crime that goes out there. But yet we still enforce them because we have penalties for those that violate the law, and this is, you know, more encouragement on the part of the citizen to not risk their harder money. Nobody's suggesting not to go to Dirty Kirk's and buy all the fireworks that they want from Dirty Kirk. Knock it out. Spend all the money you can on it. Don't discharge them within the city limits if you're within 200 feet of a person, a vehicle, or a structure, and if you do, and that police officer determines there's a presumption that you have done so, they're going to issue you a citation, not arrest you, issue you a piece of paper, take your fireworks, and you have to appear in court later, or you can simply pay the fine and move on.
And that part was not in the original ordinance? This is the add-on, is that right?
That's correct. The add-on is this part and the signage that the fireworks retailer must hang stating what the local ordinance says.
There was absolutely nothing added pertaining to the penalties. That's already in existence. What we've heard is frustration from the citizens that have complained about the fireworks, not just that they're being shot off within 200 feet of their residence, but they're being shot off at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. And the frustration that they have when the police can't do anything because they have to see somebody actually light the firework. So this is only to give that police officer a certain amount of discretion to be able to act on that complaint. If they get there and they see evidence, then they can actually do something. No more can, do we have to say, I'm sorry, the current ordinance is obviously not enforceable?
But something has changed. There's a couple of things that have changed. The fact that we are asking our policing agency to actually provide enforcement. We haven't really done that. Said, this is important to our community, go enforce it. That hasn't been done, and there's evidence of no citations in, how many years is this? Six? Six years? So that's changing.
Eleven, I think.
We're actually proposing to put resources to go into those communities, provide bicycle patrol, or whatever it is that puts them closer to the actual violators, where you could possibly see somebody lighting fireworks. Understandably, if you're on a bicycle in a neighborhood, you could have to along. Now, that is a difference.
But I've not heard anybody suggest that somebody be on a bicycle other than you. And our police department is responding now. They are responding. I mean, we have a report about the number of times that they responded. So we are sending police officers out to do the job of enforcement.
After a call occurs.
But they don't have the ability to do anything once they arrive because the commission that I served on, that put this ordinance into effect, hamstrung them. They didn't give them what they needed to be able to enforce.
We are waiting for a phone call to come in, and then we're dispatching. From what I understood in the proposal and why we would ask for extra $13,000 of overtime money was that we would actually place an officer in those neighborhoods. Is this correct, Doug? That's what I thought the extra money was for, that they would proactively be there, seeing something go off in the air, and then going and checking on what that was.
I'd be happy to discuss the details of a proposal that we have in front of you. It's a working copy of a document that we were asked to produce a couple of weeks ago, and so if we have questions about that, I'm more than happy to answer them.
But is that a more proactive approach that you're proposing rather than reactive, is what we've had?
Absolutely. We would take a more proactive stance in this case. And what I will say is, and I said two weeks ago, the number of calls for service we had a year ago or this past year, in my estimation, in the absence of public outcry, in the absence of having this discussion, didn't justify extra manpower. It was an elevated calls for service evening, if you will, but we have a lot of those throughout the year. So our staff could respond to the calls for service without being overwhelmed, but what we're doing is, in the proposal that I've given you all, is taking additional resources, focusing them on this singular problem during the time of year, during the period of time which we get the most complaints. And then we would make an effort, we would use either foot patrol, we would use bike patrol, we would use mark cars in this as well, and make an effort to put ourselves in a position to see people violating so that we could enforce more effectively. We have not done that in the past. I think the commission is asking us to do that, and I think if it's the will of this commission and at the direction of Mr. DeFebo, we will certainly apply those resources to do more proactive enforcement.
I'm completely for that, and I'm for the education. My problem here with this particular proposal is not what it's trying to do, and I think a proactive approach to enforcement and us diverting some of our permit money over to do that, and then an educational piece at the tents and on our social media and on our Channel 4, and letting folks know, it's a new day, this is going to be enforced, we're changing the way. My problem is with the presumption and not being able to hear from our county attorney whether or not that language is actually going to hold up. Can we presume somebody did something and then write them a ticket? Can we change the definition of "use" at the local level, preempting what the state has said? That's...
I'll let the chief respond.
There are other statutes that are used to create presumption, and one mainly comes to my mind is, and maybe Slim said it or not, maybe he's got one too, but the one I can think of comes to my mind is if a city police officer enters a business here in the city of Bowling Green that's open to the public but does not have an ABC license to sell alcoholic beverages, and they find alcoholic beverages in that open, that business open to the public, that creates presumption that those alcoholic beverages are being sold in violation of the local ordinance. So there are other statutes that do create, create presumptions that give police officers the ability to act, and you may remember, that's one I recall first, but...
That, that does exist, but there's KRS that provides the ability to presume, if that makes any sense. There is a KRS that supports that, that presumptive charge, if you will, but it is then charged probably under state law and local ordinance. Look, I, I, I will say, no matter what this commission does in terms of passing modified legislation or whether they want to stick with the existing legislation, we're going to do our very best to improve, increase enforcement on this matter. So the, the proposal you have in front of you is irrespective of, of the, the ordinances that are in place at that time, so we're going to make a greater effort to do that. And, and obviously we'll measure effectiveness, that has a lot of flexibility built into it, so we're going to do our very best, having heard from the commission on this issue, so we will, we will modify our approach.
I want to make one more comment about the word presumption, too. I think there's been some presumptions made by, by sitting commissioners up here that this is a mandate that a citation be issued and the fireworks be confiscated. That is certainly not the intent of this and not the way it's written. There is no mandate that a citation be issued when the police show up. It's simply to give the police the option to be able to do that, which they don't have now.
They do.
Yeah, and without debating the, the nuance of, of the potential new ordinance, under current ordinance, we would have to be in a position to see the violation in order to do something about it. Now, the presumption, I guess, as, as written in the proposed ordinance, would, would be a de facto kind of finding where, under certain conditions, it in and of itself is a violation.
You know, I'm not out to put anybody in jail, I don't want to mess up any kid's fun, but you know, there is a, there's a state law that you have to be a certain age to be able to even have these fireworks, supposedly. And if we have neighbors being good neighbors in Bowling Green and parents being good parents, we don't even have this problem. But it's obvious now that we've got some problems, and we need to, to be able to give our police authorities every tool that we can give them to use at their discretion. And that's all that this ordinance is trying to do. That's all that this language that I'm proposing is meant to do.
May I ask you a question? Doug?
Sure.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Back in the years when I served, a felony you could arrest on probable cause, which means it didn't have to occur in your presence. You had enough information to make that case. That option is not available on a misdemeanor or a violation always frustrated me because I could put somebody in jail for life and never see him, but I had to go get a warrant for somebody that, you know, ate a hamburger at a joint and didn't pay for it.
Walked out the door?
Walked out the door, yeah. It seems to me that we're trying to move that definition to explain what probable cause is and make that the part of the violation. I don't, I don't think we can do that. I mean, I think state law's been pretty clear all along. You can do that for a felony offense, and I certainly don't think that, and I have no intention of trying to equate these to the same thing, but I don't think it'll stand up in court to, to do something. We don't even have an opinion back from the county attorney who's going to prosecute this.
Maybe that's the reason we haven't got anyone to respond back.
I know how we can find out.
Is asking.
We could pass it, and let's let a citation be issued, goes to the court, goes to the courthouse, and the county attorney will have to take a position on it.
And I was really frustrated, you know, as I was going along, because I could make a ton of cases on a bunch of misdemeanors that I should have, but it takes a lot of steps to do that and, and making it worthwhile the time when I have other calls going on. So I was, I was always frustrated, but there's a reason for that, and I can't tell you what it is, because it's been that way through all of Kentucky history, so. My, my frustration is that, that I'm afraid we've tried to redefine a violation to make probable cause the standard, and I don't think it will stand up, period. But that's just my opinion.
I can agree with you. I think I said that a while ago, we are adding words to what's already there to meet our needs rather than meet the law.
I'd like to see the education and the enforcement and some dollars put behind the enforcement, and then some metrics after next year.
The idea that we're going to put more money into it in order to see people light the fuse, well, the law is 200 feet. There, there's, I mean, there, there's lots of pieces that are, that are the law. We're in here arguing about whether or not, you know, we're going to cite a kid, that's the law. I mean...
You see a kid light it off, I'd say cite him. It's the way the law stands today, and, and I believe education and enforcement...
Do you believe our current ordinance works?
No, I believe if...
So what is your proposal, then, about something that alters the ordinance that works?
Education, the education piece is very good. And the fireworks enforcement plan.
I'd like to point out that you keep holding up a document that says confidential for police use only, so I, I don't even know if we're at, at the point of discussing it publicly, but you've already started. But this, this document that you've already held up has no bearing on BG 201736. BG 201736 has no bearing on the frustration that Mayor Wilkerson experienced as a police officer on his frustration between misdemeanors and felonies. BG 201736 has no bearing on whether or not Joe set a field on fire when he was a child. What BG 201736 does have a bearing on is whether or not we're going to try to create an ordinance that allows people who enjoy discharging fireworks to cohabitate for a month out of the year with people who don't enjoy having fireworks discharged right outside their homes. That's it. That's, it's, it's pretty simple, and I, I agree with Joe. I wish it didn't come up every year. And I believe that this ordinance has a way of reducing how much it comes up next year if we would pass it.
Nat?
What are we...
Voting on passing the ordinance, which creates the presumption of possession of the bigger fireworks when there are other circumstances surrounding, you're making a presumption that they're using it, and we're requiring them to provide information to the purchasers when they, providing information about the ordinance when the item is purchased.
Fireworks vendors have to provide that.
Yeah, the dealers have to provide that to them.
We're giving the data, the data will be furnished to the, to the vendors on what they have to have on their sign and what they have to pass out on an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper.
Now, the current language requires them to put signs, basically three or four signs in each place they sell it, conspicuous places, big enough that people can read it, setting out the 200-foot requirement, the, the hours, the days can be used. It also requires them to hand out at time of the sale to each purchaser an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper. It also sets out the same things, the 200-foot rule, the days and times that they can be used. So that's the educational component of this one proposed right now.
Well, if you like, like 75% of people, if you don't like the rest, then what?
It's up to you.
He's saying if you like 75% of the ordinance, but you don't like 25% of it, how shall he vote?
I'm there, I'm there, Joe.
Let's roll.
Vote. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
No.
Wilkerson?
Oh. Ordinance fails on the first reading, but there is a second reading if you'd like to bring it up for that. Next item is municipal order 2017-140.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-68 for the trade-in and purchase of Cisco Switch wireless and security upgrades from J.B.K. Network Consulting Limited of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount, total amount of $386,229.69.
No move.
Second. Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. De Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. Given that we don't spend close to $400,000 every, every meeting on IT equipment, I thought it'd be helpful if Lynn Hartley could come forward and give you a brief overview of why we're purchasing these things today and the significance of our strategy. Lynn?
Evening, Mayor and the commission. I had told Mr. De Febo earlier that this is essentially nine projects combined into one RFP. After looking at it again, I believe, and Mr. Belcher can chime in on this too, but there's actually, I believe, four projects going on at one particular park, so we're talking about essentially a dozen projects. Three of these are unique to IT, where this is kind of a heavy year on infrastructure that we're doing. One of our projects is to replace a lot of switches. This is like something we do roughly every five to six years. The purpose of that is twofold. One is to increase the speed at overtime, a lot more traffic, so we need, the switches are kind of like traffic cops, passing the traffic back and forth from the different facilities back to our data center. And then also, each switch has a maximum capacity for how many devices can be connected to it. We're already maxed out at certain facilities, especially fire stations. We continue to add cameras, more PCs, so we have to have increased capacity. So that's one IT project is to expand and add more switches for those reasons. We also have an indoor wireless secured network that is currently for, primarily for employee use to, to access city applications via wireless. That network right now is fairly old, and it's no longer supported by the vendor, so we have to replace that equipment, basically, to stay current. And then we also have, we continue to try to add equipment at our Greenwood Disaster Recovery Site so that we can be in a better position to respond to disasters or, you know, potential downtime. The equipment we're purchasing here is primarily geared towards enabling us to be on the internet from the Greenwood site. Some, there's some routers and that type thing that go into there. And then, as, as mentioned also, there are parks that's kind of heavy this year on a lot of renovations that, I believe, six different parks where they're adding new facilities. They're adding security cameras at some parks that have absolutely nothing right now. So part of that construction and, and is, again, adding additional cameras, additional PCs, and we have to add switches to, at the different locations to provide coverage for those and allow them to communicate. So the net result is, rather than go out on 12 different quotes or five or six bids and quotes, we combined essentially 12 projects into one bid, and the budget actually is well over $400,000, so we're well within budget. If we'd done these individually, we probably would be close to budget, I would imagine.
How many sites do we service?
All park around 30, I would say. And that also, besides city facilities, we also have contract licensing board, planning, zoning, and Justice Center, we have some connections outside the city.
How many, all park, guess, how many devices do we support?
Total devices.
What users?
Users is probably 350 to 400, well, actually, we have about 600 users, I guess, some of them, they're coming and going. We have about 350 to 400 computers, but we probably have 600, 700 users. The total number of equipment, if you count cameras as a connection, PCs, so we're probably, I believe, around 1,500 in that range, if I recall correctly. So quite a few. Access points, cameras, PCs, copiers, printers, it's all type devices. Every one of those devices has to connect to a switch.
Comments required. Something, sir?
After this vote, I wonder if you would give me the courtesy of doing number 13 next, because Brent, item 13, move it up in order?
Okay.
Okay. Because that would allow Brent Belcher to have all his items together at one time.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. At your request, we'll be moving item 13 up, which is municipal order 2017-142.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of Pulstar Chlorine briquettes from, from Spear Corporation of Rochdale, Indiana for fiscal year 2018 in an amount not to exceed $57,000 to the Parks and Recreation Department.
No move.
By Paragon, second, by Nash. Mr. De Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. We used what's known as briquettes, chlorine briquettes at two of our facilities, Russell Sims and Circus Square for the fountain there. We found this is the best product for our application, and it thus, it is, has one vendor in this area from Rochdale, Indiana, and we're asking you to allow us to purchase up to $57,000 worth of briquettes as needed. Brent's here, but can you answer any questions about briquettes?
Comments required. Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Back to 12 now?
Yeah. Why did that was...
Municipal order 2017-141.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-22 for the Preston Miller Soccer Complex Construction Project from Scott &amp; Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the total amount of, of $2,136,080.
No move.
Second. Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. De Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the great things we did last year was develop a master plan for Park and Rec at your request. Today, we're here to install and complete part of that, the first part of that vision by building a new soccer complex at Preston Miller Park. That is going to cost us about $2 million, so I'd like for Brent to come up and to give you, take you around how this project will work. Brent?
Appreciate it, Mr. De Febo. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate the time. It's not often you get to come in front of you guys and, and speak about a, a pending project. It's, it's been a, 2015 is when we approved the, the master plan. It, and to get to this point, this was one of our significant recommendations from that master plan was, I believe recently, our local television station had a, interviewed us about the, the need for additional soccer facilities and got publicized this very complex then. In, in essence, the master plan has shown that something that pretty much anybody in Bowling Green knows, that Lover's Lane is maxed out to our capacity. It is highly used during soccer seasons, that on a given Saturday and actually on given weeknights, parking spaces are, are hard to come by, and field space is not easy to see. That led us to our preliminary thing was this commission approved us to do the Westin Soccer Field, which is at the end of 11th Avenue, adjacent to the Foundry, and has been, from the moment it was opened, has been used highly to the point that it is probably some turf that we have to nurse, probably more so than other places, just because it's, it's used so, so often. A good thing to have as a Parks and Recreation professional, you want that. So the other opportunities presented for our community is where do we go, and how do we present opportunities for, for individuals that want to play soccer throughout their entire community? And Preston Miller Soccer Complex or Preston Miller Park offered that, that space through Branstad and Carroll. We made some bid documents, and in front of you, we got back, what you have is a bid, which would be right over $2 million, from Scott &amp; Murphy, which is a local contractor. They would oversee this project, and I guess, if you will, I'll kind of take you around this one page to show you it's going to be no less than four full soccer fields. Appreciate it, Mr. DeFebo. Thank you, uh, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the time. It's not often you get to come in front of you guys and, uh, and speak about a, uh, a pending project. It's, it's been a, uh, two thousand fifteen is when we approved the, uh, the master plan. Uh, it, and to get to this point, this was one of our significant recommendations from that master plan was, uh, I believe recently, uh, our local television station had a, uh, a, interviewed us about the, uh, the need for additional soccer facilities and got, uh, publicized, uh, this very complex then. Uh, in, in essence, the master plan has shown, uh, that something that pretty much anybody in Bowling Green knows, that Lover's Lane is maxed out to our capacity. Uh, it is highly used, uh, during soccer seasons that, uh, on a given Saturday and actually on a given weeknights, uh, parking spaces are, are hard to come by, and, uh, field space is not easy to see. Uh, that led us to our preliminary thing was, uh, this commission approved us to do the, uh, West End Soccer Field, which is at the end of Eleventh Avenue, uh, adjacent to the Foundry, and has been, uh, from the moment it was opened, has been used highly to the point that, uh, uh, it is probably, uh, some turf that we have to nurse probably more so than other places just because it's, uh, it's used so ho- so often. A good thing to have as a Parks and Recreation professional, you want that. Uh, so, uh, the other opportunities presented for our community is where do we go? Uh, how do we present opportunities for, for individuals, uh, that want to play, uh, soccer throughout their entire community? And, uh, Preston Miller Soccer Complex or Preston Miller Park offered that, that space, uh, through Branstad and Carroll. We made some bid documents, and in front of you, uh, we got back, uh, uh, what you have is, uh, a, a bid which would be right over two million dollars from, uh, Scott and Murphy, uh, which is a, a local contractor. They would oversee this project, and I guess if you will, I'll kind of take you around, uh, this one page to show you it's going to be, uh, no less than four, uh, full soccer fields. Uh, there are four large soccer fields listed here on this diagram. Uh, the value of that is a, a, a large soccer field. Obviously, you can divide it up into multiple different smaller soccer fields depending upon the age and, uh, the number of players. Uh, so, obviously, the first priority is the four large soccer areas. Uh, then we go into, uh, it really goes into a lot of sidewalks, a lot of parking lot, uh, parking lots. You're talking, if you've ever been to Preston Miller Soccer, uh, Preston Miller Park, uh, this is the gravel lot that's located near the back shelter, which is right there, the back shelter that exists currently. This is the gravel lot that is near the back shelter. This will be developing that gravel lot into a, uh, a asphalt parking lot, uh, that would house the majority of the, uh, the users for our soccer, soccer enthusiasts. The others, uh, addition would be, at this section, would be additional parking spaces right there. Uh, would be more soccer spaces. It'd be actually adjacent to the volleyball sand court parking lot. It's, uh, the sand courts, the, are right here. That, their parking lot is right there, and this would be additional parking spaces along Tomlinson Way.
Do you have a number of spaces?
I do not have a number in front of me. I do not, no. Uh, but I can tell you it's as many as we can fit. Uh, with that said, it becomes a parking lot, uh, construction project, and then just to the south, as you're going towards, uh, it's really not Jennings Creek. It's a, uh, it's, it leads into Jennings Creek, but that's, that is a basin that would collect the water that comes from the fields and the parking lots, holds the water, and then eventually takes it out to that, uh, to that creek bed that takes to Jennings Creek eventually, uh, which is a requirement, uh, for us to have. That's really the, the three large things that, the, this is sidewalks here that lead you into the, you have an entry point here. Uh, you can walk into here, and you can walk into here. I guess four, and this is the fourth one from the, from the top field or from the, from the, what's it, actually, it's the south parking lot. Uh, all entry points into the soccer complex. Uh, these larger rectangles here are bleachers. Uh, so, it's going to be ADA, uh, meet ADA requirements. The two fields here closest to the water park, if you can imagine, the water park is in this direction, these are the two lit fields. Uh, the fields closer to the neighborhood would not be lit. Uh, only these two would be lit. Uh, and I guess the other point to, uh, to show you is obviously it's going to have irrigation. Uh, all four areas, if you will, will be completely Bermuda fields, so it allows us, uh, even this little section here that kind of bulbs out, it's all Bermuda so that, uh, we can have the maximum practice capacity and, uh, usage capacity. Uh, for lack, that, I think, uh, coming up here in a few seconds, we'll be talking about another, uh, well, a couple of weeks ago, we approved the construction of a soccer entry building and the part, the, uh, water park admission building. This is the site of the water park admission building, and this is the site of the soccer entry building. That's ba- basically bathrooms and electric, yes, sir.
Are we going to have the capacity for restrooms for all this taking place?
Right here, this, this will have a restroom right there. Uh, this section right here, this, this building will have restrooms.
Only one?
Uh, one, one building. One building with men and women's restrooms.
He's asking only one restroom?
One building for, yes, one bell, it's one building with additional ba- yes. Multiple restrooms inside.
I think it's go. We build some, next year we having to expand it. I just want to make sure that we had enough to begin with.
We are excited that, if you go to Preston Miller, you can just see the faint out, outline of a basketball court that is currently there right now. That kind of gives you a blueprint of where the, the soccer comp, the soccer fields will be at. So, it's really using every available space in the open field, uh, at Preston Miller Park. Be happy to answer any questions you have. We're, uh, to say we're excited is probably not the, uh, the true definition. It's, it's one of those rare moments you get to have in the Parks and Recreation business that you have a, uh, hopefully bringing something before you that, uh, can be considered for our community, and it's something that, uh, we know will be well received if, uh, if and, uh, and when. I can give you a timeline. Timeline would be, I guess that'd be helpful. A timeline, because of the type of grass, uh, we, we can have consistent tournament play, we'll say, regular play, uh, beginning, uh, around August of next year. It's going to take June and July of the Bermuda grass grow, to grow in. Uh, the way I, the parking lot will be the very last thing that the construction does only because of the, the large trucks that's needed. That'll be the last thing that they do. So, uh, there'll be a lot of landfill. It's, it's really not adding a lot of dirt to it because it's relatively flat now. It was, it was made that way, way back when, when the park was actually constructed. Uh, so, it won't be a lot of, a, a ton of dirt added. However, topsoil will be added. It will be needed to actually grow the grass. Uh, and then the basin, and then the parking lot will be the last thing that, that'll come along. But happy to answer any questions you guys have, and once again, this is, uh, something that we're looking forward to. Uh, if you know anything about the community there, uh, presently, just so you know, without orchestrated soccer fields, we have play there. Now, we have soccer goals up now. Uh, the neighborhood lends itself to have a lot of, uh, free play, soccer play happening right now, uh, today as we speak. Uh, it's used often, and, uh, this will, uh, capitalize on that even more.
Comments or questions?
I appreciate the fact that we're building, uh, soccer parks in places where people play soccer, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, the Parks Department has the vision, uh, to continue to identify what, uh, how people want to recreate and then provide them the, the opportunity to do so, whether we're talking about tennis courts in some areas, whether we're talking about soccer fields in this case in other areas, or whether we're talking about the skate park downtown. The fact that people want to recreate, and our Parks Department has the vision to be able to help them do that and provide them safe places to do it is, is, you're to be commended for that, as is your staff.
Thank you very much. Uh, obviously, our mission is to improve the quality of lives with the, with the, those within our community and visitors as well.
I believe you do that. I, I have a, another question, or a question. That was a statement. Uh, does that portion of Jennings Creek regularly hold water?
It's not.
So, there, is there, it, I, I believe the next question would be no, but is there any way related to the irrigation to pull water from there to the field?
Would it not be from this? It's, it's a dry bed creek until it rains, until it has some sort of a rainfall, and then it collects and disappears shortly thereafter. Yeah.
Further questions?
On, on this item, but at the, right before we vote on, uh, Fountain Square, I'd like to make a comment.
Other comments? Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Next is municipal, item number fourteen is municipal order two thousand seventeen one forty-three.
Municipal order amending municipal order number two thousand seventeen ninety-eight, which authorized and accepted negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number two thousand seventeen fifty-eight for the Preston Miller Park Soccer Area Improvements and Russell Sims Aquatic Entry Building from Scott Murphy and Daniel, LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the total amount of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars to further authorize the direct purchase of materials from various vendors.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Mr. Febo?
Uh, the wording of this is a little awkward, so I thought it'd be helpful as Brent, again, could explain to you what we're doing. This is another project that involves Preston Miller and, uh, Aquatic Center as well as an improvement for soccer. Brent?
Jake, coming back to you. Uh, uh, nice to be back. Uh, actually, you approved this, uh, this project last, our, our last Board of Commissioner meeting, and this is really a house ca- uh, keeping measure. If, uh, if you'll remember, the, uh, when we approved this, uh, this was a Scott and Murphy Daniels, uh, Scott Murphy Daniel was the contractor on this. Uh, it was a, a negotiate after sealed bid. Uh, they were the only, uh, only bidder, and, uh, we had negotiations to bring the, the budget total down. One of the, the items we, uh, we wanted to, uh, to do was to do direct purchase from vendors to save on, on some sales tax. Uh, this, uh, addendum was left off on the writ, on what you approved in the municipal order last time, two weeks ago, and we, we need to make sure and have that language there so that we can purchase supplies for Scott Murphy Daniel to actually do the project. That's two buildings. One is the admission building at the water park, uh, a new admission building at the water park that's taking the place of the former shelter, and the other is the restrooms that, uh, that Commissioner Denning asked about as far as the entry point for the soccer fields. Uh, that would be the two facilities we're talking about. It's really a, an amendment to, uh, that last municipal order, just to make sure that the, the language speaks to what we're going to be doing with this project.
Comments or questions?
It's important to note that, uh, what we're doing here tonight is designed to, uh, save money, correct, and live within our means on this particular budgetary item, so...
It's not adjust the total price. It's really just to make sure that the, uh, uh, we, we have the processes available to us.
We don't use tax money to pay tax.
Yes.
He's caller roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand seventeen one forty-four.
Municipal order authorizing two change orders to the contract with Scott and Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Fountain Square Park Rehabilitation Project related to bid number two thousand seventeen forty-one in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars for a total project cost of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll move.
Second.
By Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. Febo?
I'd ask Brent to provide you a brief, uh, rationale why we need to increase this budget so quickly after we approved it. Uh, Brent, can you provide that courtesy, please?
Nice to be back again. Thank you very much.
Glad to see you.
Uh, there are, uh, actually, the, this, this project was approved, this municipal order was approved in May. Uh, the actual project has, uh, began July the fifth, and, uh, Fountain Square, uh, I think is, is, has been one of these things that we, we need going into it, that, uh, she may have some unknowns that we may not necessarily have known, uh, all that, uh, she, she bared. But with that in mind, we, uh, we come to you with five key elements that, uh, we feel like the change order is necessary to improve, to, uh, to, uh, complete the project. Uh, one of those is a, a word that, uh, Mr. Febo has tried to teach me his time, as my upbringing apparently didn't include this in my vocabulary, but the finial, uh, that, for whatever reason, I never learned the word finial. Uh, but anyway, it's, it's seven finials on the, the fountain itself, uh, from Robinson Iron in Alabama that has, uh, uh, Hebe right now that's doing some work with her. Uh, well, has the, uh, the, the cast to actually do the, the seven finials that were missing, uh, from, from the, uh, the, the iron fence, if you will, uh, that, that surrounds the pool. Uh, there are five courses of brick that's at the base of the, of the pool that we neglected to include in our removal and, uh, replacement. Uh, we feel like because of the appearance, they will stick, they will, they will be, it'll be known to show that they are, are not in quality shape once the rest of the brick pavers are completed. So, we, now we come to you with the, uh, the idea of, of including those. Uh, and then the last simple one would be the, uh, we have to have a grounding wire now in the, from the fountain. Uh, formerly, we didn't. Uh, now we do. That's a, 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 a new requirement. Two of the larger reasons why we're here that takes us up over the fifty thousand dollar mark, one is, uh, which would be a, a Parks and Rec mistake when, uh, asking for your approval. We got, uh, we, uh, we put our bid out. We got, uh, one light pole. Uh, we did it per, we did a per-use light pole for the, for the price. We didn't times it by twenty when we brought it to you, so now we come to you, including that figure because that was mistaken. We actually, uh, got the approval from you guys, uh, the first time. And the second thing was, and this is one of the surprises, uh, the conduit, uh, now is the time to replace the conduit that actually connects the light poles and into the light pole. Uh, we, uh, we felt like it, it's the time to actually do that now, and that, that would bring, uh, the, the total price combined over fifty thousand dollars for all five pieces, uh, of the change order. Uh, with this, like to make sure the community knows that, uh, phase one is currently ongoing. Uh, phase one goes until September. Uh, this is within the park itself. Uh, phase one is from, uh, State Street to the middle of the fountain. Phase two should begin, uh, around, well, it's supposed to begin in September and go until November, the first of November. That would be from, uh, College Street back to the middle of the fountain, and then Hebe would be the last thing to come back to us, uh, in, in November. Uh, so, uh, and there, there are regular updates on the city websites, Twitter and such. Uh, it's something that, uh, obviously, we're taking a great pride in as a city and, and have some other things in relation to this coming for, for more work around, around this square.
We had what has been, I guess, the number of comments and our complaints pertaining to our project. I thought I read somewhere in the other where there were some complaints about the things we're doing right now in phase one. Have we had, especially negative?
I'm not aware of, uh, a lot of negative feedback, and actually, I can tell, and we, when we walked around to, uh, ensure that the downtown businesses were aware of the date, we're talking roughly a week prior to July the fifth, so whatever that dates those were, uh, we had a lot of positive feedback in that, uh, I think most, uh, businesses and users around understand the need for the, uh, the improved sidewalk paving. Uh, can, it's obvious that the fountain needs some work. Uh, I think most people understand that. I don't think any of us appreciate, you know, none of us would prefer that Hebe had to leave. Uh, you know, it's one of those things nobody wants to, to have to have that part of a major operation, but to have, uh, you know, the, the final product as a necessary part of it. Uh, with that, uh, going into this project, uh, we all know the, uh, the significant impact that, that piece of property has to our city. So, there's no doubt that people, you know, nobody wants to have a construction fence around Fountain Square Park right now, and, uh, it's just a necessary part of it. Does that mean that everybody enjoys it? Of course not. I'm sure they don't enjoy every part of that, you know, having the construction fence around. Uh, with that said, uh, I give kudos to Scott and Murphy. They went above and beyond the call. This, if you look at the, the construction fence itself, uh, it's saved every parking spot. There's not a parking spot that's taken with that fence. It's, it has saved the, the sidewalk, uh, the, the perimeter sidewalk just outside the park is still open for use. Uh, they did have to close what we'll say the, the inner turn lane of State Street. They'll have to do the same thing on College Street. That's their staging area that they have to have for, for their materials and supplies and such. Uh, but, uh, I don't want to tell you that, uh, everybody's been patting us on the back, but I would like to tell you that, uh, I think everybody understands there's a part of necessary work that has to be done to, for this, to, to have the large celebration we have come, come November and in for the future, uh, it's a necessary part.
May I add just one more thing? On this date in two thousand and seventeen, that as we go through our construction program, state, stage one, stage two, whatever, that we not have some landscape architect put a sycamore tree in front of everything that we want people to see. In other words, a marker, a plaque, or whatever. Do not put some bush up in front of it that is cute today, but five years down the road is covering everything up around it. Please, please don't do that.
Understood. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I hate to see people put a brand-new sign up, then the landscape architect puts these little cute shrubs there. Four years down the road, the shrub is cup, covering up everything that is behind. You can't see it. Had that to happen on property of one of our major employers here in the city of Bowling Green, maybe even a major or number one, right down off of the bypass in front of Kroger's coming in. Big money, big-money sign put up there that needs to be there for the next hundred years. Little old cute green shrubbery, cute when it's put up. Little later on, it's covering up the whole dang gone thing. Can't see what you are supposed to be seeing for the little three-dollar shrubs.
Right. I think you're, the entire Bowling Green Parks Landscape Division would say amen. They, they agree with you whole, wholeheartedly. They, they, they prefer not have to trim often.
Same thing with?
I'll answer questions.
I'm do, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. I didn't know.
Let me start on the shrubbery.
Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal order two thousand seventeen one forty-five.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting a proposal from Vaughn and Melton Consulting Engineers Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky, related to a request for qualifications for engineering and design services for the Downtown Square Improvements Project, bid number two thousand seventeen fifty-seven in an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
By Nash and second by Paragon. Mr. Febo?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, last meeting, we introduced you to Vaughn and Melton Consulting Engineers at Lexington. Uh, tonight, we're going to, uh, explain to you what they're going to do for us and how much they're going to charge us, and leading that would be, uh, Brent Childers and Greg Meredith. Brent? And before, after he's done, I'd like to make a few comments if that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Febo, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, it's not many times I stand before you with, uh, with a contract amount of this size. And, uh, we've taken this very seriously as we've done the planning and the background and getting to this point. We understood that, uh, this project has a level of significance, um, that sometimes we don't come across every day. Uh, we hire engineers, we hire architects, we've been a part of projects, uh, for a long period of time. And if, um, but this one is different. Uh, the price is different and what we're asking is different. Uh, so one thing that I want to go through, I know you all have my memo and you have the list of, of items that Vaughn and Melton will be, uh, providing for us, is what we're really asking a firm to do is come in, help us, come alongside us, work with us, and listening to people, listening to stakeholders, listening to the community, listening to business owners in the downtown area, and come up with ideas, concepts, designs. And then, let's take it back out to the people. Let's take it back out to the business owners, to the stakeholders, to the people who live in this community. And, uh, then, once we're to that point, let's then go forth and design this, whatever it is. We don't know what it is at this point. There is an unknown. We have ideas. We have a, a series of ideas, but we don't know what those are going to be in detail. So then we want you to design it. And then we want you to help us as we go through the construction process to make sure that what, whoever's putting this in is putting it incorrectly. And that's gonna take two years, but we want you to give us a number now that we're gonna hold you to for this two-year period as you help us through step one, step two, step three, step four, step five, all the way through step fifteen that is listed out in the memo before you. And that is different than what we generally do with an architect, an engineer, and a lot of services that, that are projects that we do in this community. I gave an example the other day about, uh, Small House Road, a very large road project currently under construction here in Bowling Green. That project, we were able to say, okay, we want you to design a road from here to here with an eight-foot greenway. Tell us what that's gonna cost. That's pretty straightforward. There's an expectation of about what that should cost. And this one, it's, we, we wanna build something, but tell us what it's gonna cost to listen, work with us, put up with us, put up with the, the, the trials and tribulations of going through this project, and then design it, and then help us construct it a year from now, and give us that number. So that, this one is different. I want you to understand that. We went through a different process. We, we took a different role. We took a different method. As we went through this process, uh, we, we brought the firm down at the last meeting to introduce them to you all. Uh, one thing that really stood out with us, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, and I want to mention it again tonight, uh, is their, uh, ability to bring in a public relations person that can help us communicate to the community about this project, that can, has the technological platforms to push information out, that has the expertise that has done this in, in other cities, uh, that has done this in other communities, and, and knows what this process is like. Because that's something, this isn't something we've done. You know, we've done, okay, we're gonna go and put some light poles. Okay, we're gonna go and put some benches. Okay, we're gonna put in some bike racks. That's what we've done for the last twenty years. We haven't done, hey, we're gonna look at a five-block area and we're gonna redesign this and change this for the future of this community. And we're gonna make changes that are going to impact us, our family, and the generations that come behind us. We've never done that down here. And that's what we're looking to do. And that's why we see that this project is different. I understand it's a high number. We had the option of breaking this up into pieces, to do a preliminary design, a conceptual design, a final design, and making this, uh, contract in pieces. We elected not to do that. Uh, we wanted a number from the beginning. We wanted one number from the beginning, uh, to move forward with, uh, that everything was on the table from the beginning of this is what we want to do, and this is, this is what it's gonna cost to do that, to accomplish this vision that we've been working for, for the last several years, at the staff level, presenting it to you at the retreat level, and then coming before you all now to, to move forward with a professional services firm. Um, there's, there's something that I have to deal with, and Nick and I have to deal with in our FTA. We have to talk about reasonableness whenever we do something, whenever you spend money. You know, is, is the cost reasonable? It's a measure of cost reasonableness. And this is something that, you know, we don't do very often. If we go out to buy, uh, a vehicle, we know about what that vehicle's gonna cost. It's easy to go find what the market price of a vehicle is. This isn't something that we've been able to just go out and search on Amazon and see what this cost. Uh, so we did do some research. We contacted other communities. Uh, Mr. Meredith can, can come up here in just a second and talk to you about, uh, some contacts that he has in the engineering world about determining reasonableness. And we believe that this is the market value for this type of service. Um, we believe that we've done the due diligence to find the right firm. Uh, this is a firm that has done this in Knoxville, uh, over the course of, I think, four blocks of a busy downtown street that connects the hospital and the university. Um, so that, you know, you talk about work coordination and communication and partners, uh, they're, they're trying to keep access and opportunities available to a hospital and a university. Uh, that has its own challenges unto itself. Uh, so we wanted somebody who had been there, had done that, and was willing to come into Bowling Green and provide those same services. Um, so if you'd like, I can turn it over to Mr. Meredith if, if you want to hear his take, or I can, uh, go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Meredith.
Over you, Mr.
I think you did.
Thanks, Brent. And I think, uh, what he, the term he used for reasonableness is something we're always striving for, to make sure we're doing the right thing, we're, we're, we're putting things in the right scope, and we're comparing apples to apples. Um, I think that came out in our selection process when we looked at the, the eight different firms that, that supplied proposals for the RFQ. And we looked at the work that they had done, how similar that was, and the innovation and the ideas that they brought to the table. And that's why this firm, I think, um, it came to the top because of the work that they had done, the examples. And again, we, we've talked to some of the communities they've worked in. Um, and we looked also at prices. Again, Brent mentioned that, that this is not done in a vacuum. Other engineering firms have done other work that, that are streetscapes, that are downtown improvements, et cetera. And so I had the opportunity to call, to talk to, uh, a few of my colleagues that work in the private sector that have done projects, again, similar, not only in, in size and scope, but for neighbor, uh, but for cities with, with similar populations. And so what I found was, you know, the number that we're looking at is in the area of ten to eleven percent of the total project cost for the engineering, the architect, and yes, the landscape, uh, architect services that plant bushes and trees. Uh, we're gonna minimize that, Joe, though, of course.
Thank you.
So, and we looked and, and again, with the construction management, with the construction oversight, with that coordination that we think is so key here. Again, Brent did a great job of talking about how that coordination, just for the internal part of Fountain Square, was important. Just think how important that's gonna be when we go out and we touch the roadways, we touch the sidewalks, the way that people get to and from, uh, all the businesses downtown. We think it's essential that we have that, that component. Uh, and with that, again, the reasonableness, uh, with the firms that I've talked to, uh, are right in line. Again, with construction management, with taking the whole project over, those percentages went to fifteen and twenty percent, uh, of total project cost, depending on scope. Um, so with that, I know, uh, we've thrown a lot at you, out at you, and we'd be willing to, uh, answer individual questions that may help, uh, to put this in better perspective, if you have any.
We get into questions, I think, Mr. Febo had a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a few comments about tonight's agenda and this project in particular. It's not every night that, every meeting that we spend, uh, close to four million dollars to improve this community. It's not lost on me that that, that is a lot of money, that two, over two hundred thousand dollars for architects, engineers to design the future of, of the downtown is, isn't insignificant. Uh, hopefully you were understood from Brent and Greg's presentation that our hiring of a consultant is properly priced in this market and for what we hope to get. But even then, we don't take that lightly. Um, I don't want to give the impression that we spend four million dollars every commission meeting, because we don't. Uh, as you all remember, we went through, uh, a tenacious three-year recession, and during that period of time, uh, we didn't spend much money for things that were needed in the community. Uh, for example, we've needed a soccer complex for some time. And tonight, uh, we were able to bring that to you and, and budget for that and, um, provide the money necessary. That four million dollars we're spending tonight, none of it comes from debt. One of our financial strategies has been, uh, to save our money, uh, on, on the long run, that we plan for projects ahead of time. The project that Brent presented, even phase two, uh, everything was done with the eye idea of don't take on debt and wait for the proper time. I know the optics is not great when you spend four million dollars, but we're investing four million dollars in our community. It's an also know that, uh, that four million dollars of spend was created by activities this commission and others have taken. We incented since two oh six, three thousand, three hundred jobs in our community. And that has, we've also given back fourteen million dollars to people who want to invest in our community. So, our strategy has always been is to create jobs that will create occupation tax that will help pay for projects that don't require us to take on debt. So tonight's exam, is an example of that. And I, I think we should look at it as something that is, is needed and, and involves, uh, the right strategy. Um, in the end, I just want to say that I, I, I support what we're doing here and how we're spending the money. And these projects meet that hard test of wants and needs, and I, I think these projects are needed. And we have the money for that. We have created, helped create ourselves. So I would urge you to support our, your spreading program that was approved and budget. I just wish it was spread over four or five days of commission meetings instead of one night. Uh, so I understand the impact of that, but that needs, uh, an explanation. Thank you.
I'll answer questions. I appreciate the effort you went in to, to provide the explanations that we've been going through here tonight because I, I, uh, alerted you ahead of time that I had some discomfort about the amount of money we were going through. So I appreciate you taking the time so that we all understand what's going on. Um, yeah, if you don't mind, we'll just take a couple-minute break while we're waiting for Joe to come back in. Let me go look for him.
All right, then.
Know who's in charge. We know who's in charge. Who stops the meeting? For return to the meeting, please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand seventeen one forty-six.
Municipal order authorizing and approving a contract extension for demolition and sinkhole repair services related to bid number two thousand seventeen zero seven from Scott and Ritter Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the total amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Denning. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. In two thousand sixteen, this commission approved a contract for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with, uh, Scott and Ritter to accomplish two things. One, to help us demolish old dilapidated buildings and to repair various sinkholes in the community. The way we packaged the contract back then, we have two years to, uh, exercise options. This is the first year of an option. If you would so approve it, that allows us to perform the same services for the same price. Uh, Brent is here, if you have any questions.
I'll answer questions. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Resolution two thousand seventeen, number one.
Resolution of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, supporting the separation of the county employees' retirement system from the Kentucky retirement systems.
So moved.
Second motion by Welk, uh, Williams, second by me. Mr. Febo.
I think it's no, uh, secret to any of us who read the newspapers or TV that, uh, Kentucky has been pronounced as the worst public retirement system in, in the country. Uh, believe it or not, we are, we are part of that as a city government, so is, uh, our, our neighbors across the way in the county. Uh, the Kentucky rest, retirement system is known as KRS, and it has incumbent parts. One of those incumbent parts is CERS, which stands for the County Retirement System, which we're, we're part of that. Uh, the resolution tonight has been urged by KLC, uh, that asked us to pass a resolution, and all the rest of the cities are doing the same, to allow us to separate, uh, from KRS and have that be approved, uh, by that board. Uh, the reason we're doing this is that the true reality is that KRS isn't completely the worst retirement system. The KRS part is. The CERS part is sixty-two percent funded vis-à-vis the KRS, which is made up of the state at a much lower level. So the feeling is if that we separate out, we will not be, uh, for lack of a better word, uh, brought down by, uh, the KRS retirement system. The city government and other county governments have been making their payments, sometimes at great pain. The state, as another part of this entity, has not been as scrupulous about making their payments. Well, at the same time, uh, they have, uh, seemed free to liberate sixty-two percent of the administrative cost of, of running, uh, both systems. So KLC wants us to push for a separation to allow our plan to stay, uh, in good shape and, uh, separate ourselves from KRS. This is symbolic vote. Uh, whether or not, whether we approve it or not, it's, it's gonna be, uh, decided at the, at the state level, but your support in separating us would be helpful in protecting the integrity of our retirement system for our employees.
Febo, normally, we don't vote on international, national, or state issues, and this has specific Bowling Green nexus in that it will cost us...
Wouldn't bring in here if it did.
It would cost us an, an additional two million dollars a year for retirement if they, uh, impose the
Right.
current assumption rates on, on all of us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Kate, you want to add to that?
Actually, over three million, but yes.
Three million annually?
Yes.
We, we, we would somehow manage that, but it would not be easy. And, um, other entities would have, would be catastrophic for some. We, we do a good job. The city governments in which you're part of, uh, we pay our bills, including our retirement, and others haven't. And to be lumped in with a group that is taking our payments to make the administrative cost and not making their basic, um, uh, retirement payments is a problem for us. So we would like to separate. And I'm aware of the, of the national versus state and the political, um, resolutions, but this is not political. This is survival for us.
Comment or question?
I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote as I'm a current active, um, recipient of KERS, um, dollars through retirement program.
Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen? abstaining. Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand seventeen one forty-seven.
Municipal order approving the submission of the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, section eight Management Assessment Program Certification for the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
We're here tonight to, uh, authorize the submission of what is known as CMAP, the Section Eight Management Assessment Program. True to form HUD requires us to provide, uh, a management doc, document to them saying how well we are, not well, we run the section eight, uh, program. Uh, it's important to note that most of the program work is done by Alvera Remick, uh, who has been doing this for a number of years. If we, uh, are deemed to, uh, be a great performer or a high performer, it'll be the eleventh straight year, and it starts with submission of this, this document. Brent, you want to add anything to that?
Okay. Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-148.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application to the New American Economy and Welcoming America for the Gateways for Growth Challenge Grant in the amount up to $12,500.
So moved.
Nash, second by Perigin. Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Job creation, as I know personally from coming from a community that is no longer growing and in fact is dying, we're very blessed in Bowling Green because we have a community that is creating jobs. And without new jobs, you don't have a community. So, we're very blessed to have job creation, which I mentioned earlier, that we help with that, incenting roughly 3,000 jobs since 2006 and providing $14 million in incentives. We have the opposite problem here. We can create jobs, but we're having a difficult time, as well as our other partners in the 10-county area, to provide qualified persons, labor, skills to fill those jobs. We've been working with the Chamber and the new Job Development Committee to help solve that problem. You can have all the jobs you want, but unless people are working and producing a product that have the skills, it doesn't help. We've tried a variety of different strategies. We're increasingly moving to more creative strategy with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, and you can note there's letters in the packet asking us to support what is known as the Welcoming America for Gateway for Growth Challenge Grant. In our community, as the commission knows, we have a number of new Americans who currently are providing their services in an area outside of Bowling Green. A number of these new Americans are working in industries located in Bowling Green, but we believe, as does the Chamber and its consultant, Lori Stromp, that we should look at taking a larger approach to having these new Americans participate in filling jobs. Why is this important? Right now, we are short 6,000 jobs in our community. I provided you a document, hopefully you get a chance to read later. It also speaks to the fact that that could be well over 45,000 jobs in 10 years a shortage of. So, working with the Chamber and with a new Job Development Community and with Lada Becker and her community, it would come up with the idea that we should apply for this grant that would help develop a strategic plan to incorporate more new Americans into the workforce. This would be an important additional strategy to fill those 6,000 jobs that is needed right now. Lada Becker, who's been instrumental in working with the Chamber, is here, if you have any new questions. It's a grant. We could get 12,000. We got to put 12,000 in, and in the end, we hope to have a strategy that helps to fill this void. So, we urge your approval.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-37.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to comply with amended statutory changes related to code enforcement.
So moved.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning. Mr. DeFebbe.
Provide parity between the two Brents. I would ask Brent Childers to come up now and explain what this particular ordinance is about as it relates to codes. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. A couple of years ago, the General Assembly passed what we called locally House Bill 422, which really changed some of the dynamics of code enforcement and property maintenance enforcement. It had to do with the liens and a lot of stuff like that. Well, we were at a KLC training, and I recall, and they were going through some of the new aspects of House Bill 422, and they were going through the actual service of citations, how a citation will be served. And everybody goes, "No, no, 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 that's not right." It was one of those that there was an and or an or, something like that, and we all, the whole crowd recognized quickly that, no, we had been doing it wrong, so we had made KLC aware of this. They may move forward in the last session to make a change on the service of citations when it relates to code enforcement. And so, what this ordinance is, is adopting that new language that was created by state law. So, it doesn't change any of the fines, doesn't change any of the fees, doesn't change any thing in our code enforcement ordinance, other than how we go about serving citations. And one of the issues that we were running into is some of the methods that it talked about in there, we felt like put officers, code enforcement officers, in a difficult position for service. Now, it allows us to serve how we had been serving. So, what we are, what we have been doing is now correct under the law. So, if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to entertain those.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-38.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.83 acre from HB Highway Business to LI Light Industrial located on a portion of 125 Hunter Court, presently owned by 125 Hunter LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. This is the first reading of a rezoning ordinance with a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-39.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 89.94 acres from AG Agriculture to RM4 multifamily residential and HB Highway Business located at 495 Lover's Lane, presently owned by Chandler Residential LLC, the Medical Center, and American Bank and Trust.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams. This is the land that we annexed a couple of meetings ago, presented from the Planning Commission with eight yeses and one abstention, so there are no no votes, zero no votes. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-149.
Municipal Order waiving fees related to the use of Circus Square Park and by, sorry, by the Sky Science Festival Incorporated for Sky Science Festival's Expo Day on August 20th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Perigin, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. In a very short number of weeks, we're going to witness, all witness, what it's going to be a solar eclipse, and we're in the epizone of that witness. A couple of days or one day before that, where there's hopefully going to be a science festival at Circus Square, put on by the science, Southern Kentucky Science Festival Group, headed by Mr. Richard Gelderman. Mr. Gelderman, can you stand up, please? Thank you. I've been working, Brent and I and others have been working with Mr. Gelderman to advance the idea of a science festival as an ongoing civic activity, similar to the International Fest. We would like, with your support, to participate in making this an annual event. We talked earlier about job creation and getting qualified people. One of the main items of training today in this competitive world is the idea of STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math. So, Mr. Gelderman and his group that is associated with independently and with the university has over since 2015, developing a science fair festival at first at the university and the last two years, last year at Circus Square. They're here tonight to ask you to acquire the use of Circus Square for this festival on August 20th. We think it's symbiotic with the eclipse, and I think it'd be good for young people to learn more about STEM areas. If you look at the map provided in your packet, I found it increasingly interesting for my granddaughter, who's seven, to participate in something like this, to expand her view of the world and learning. Also, in your packet from Gary Fields is a letter of support. So, tonight, we're here to see if you'll provide Circus Square for free for roughly a six-hour period, and that'll be the day before, right, Richard, before the eclipse. And we expect many visitors to be in our community, and I think it would be, speak well for us, when these visitors leave, to say that we understand the importance of science and, plus, it'll be cool. I mean, so, we urge your support. Would you like to hear from Mr. Gelderman?
Sure.
Richard, you want to come up and just give a...
Mr. Yavon at the Rotary Club made a great presentation.
Thank you. The eclipse is going to be an amazing thing to help finish off the preparations in this community and with visitors, to spread information and to distribute the solar viewers that everyone will need to safely view the eclipse the next day on Monday, the 21st. Set of, right now, 21 vendor, 21 exhibitors, hopefully going up to 36 different exhibitors in the park, and then vendors on the College Street side, food trucks, to help make it a festival, a celebration.
Quite an event. Questions? Thanks so much.
Can I add one thing? It's our intent to, I know the commission can change every so often, but it's our desire to have this be a signature event for the community, similar to the International Fest. With your vote, I would hope that would be in the back of your mind, that we'll bring it every year to you to get support, and we would urge you to go to the fair on that day, so.
Comments or questions? Thank you for your work on it. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First of the meeting, we did a late file for ordinance, the first reading of ordinance 2017-40.
Ordinance annexing property by consent, ordinance annexing 3.12 acres of property located at 7288 Louisville Road, presently owned by Newcom Oil Company LLC, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. This is normally, we don't generally do late files, but we understand in annexing this property, it helps the builder maintain the state, or obtain the state licenses that they need in order to operate. So, we, rather than have a special call meeting, we chose to add it to the late file. Are there any comments or questions to the corner of Louisville Road and 68? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
But he's had an opportunity to speak for a long time. Here's tonight. Jennifer, I cut you off earlier, and you had an opportunity to speak first tonight.
Yes.
It's your turn.
Jennifer, do you understand what he's saying, though? You got cut off earlier during fireworks, so if you want to make your comment, and then we failed to get back to you, so if you want to make your...
That's not a problem. I know you respond, but this is not for you, this is for them. Yeah, my name is Jennifer Morland, and there's three issues I want to talk about. One is the fact that police force, we need more funding for police. We do, because I live in Huntingbird Apartments, and it took two hours to get a police officer there, and they said it's because, they said it's because they just don't have anybody there. So, that's kind of strange. Isn't that kind of strange? I mean...
What kind of call? What, what did you say to the police?
Somebody, somebody broke in my car.
Someone broke into your car?
Yes, and I...
How long did it take for the police to get there?
Hour and a half.
Well...
And see, they told me the reason why is because they don't have the funding, or they can't find anybody to do it, and that's sad. We need more funding for the police officers. They have offended us for the longest time. We need more funding. And then, and if what happened to me won't happen to anybody else, could you imagine? They could have killed me. They could have. How do you know? And on top of it, I called 911, and I talked to them and get an officer over there, and I kept on calling because my phone got messed up and I didn't mean to. They called me back, finally, but it took them the longest time to do that. So, it is kind of funny. It is kind of funny. We need more funding for police officers. We do.
Has the chief left?
No, the chief's not here. I wanted to know why the chief slipped up, and that's weird. Okay, and then, another thing, another thing, another thing is the small business development. You took the funding away from the small business development, and that's wrong, because this area was created with the small businesses, and you need to put more funding in the small business. You know, there should be a special funding to help small businesses, and you, you're not doing it. So, I'm just wondering why. Two, two, two. The Fairness Act. The Fairness Act should be passed, and Slim believes that and everything, and I would love for you to prove the shadow of a doubt that people are not born gay, because if you prove that, then maybe people would say, "Hey, maybe, but you're wrong. You are wrong. Prove it that people are not born gay." So, I'm just, this is, especially, I'm speaking my mind, and you're probably going to arrest me when I walk out the door, or maybe not. Maybe not. Maybe you will let people speak up their mind, but if you do, if you do arrest me, because I'm speaking my mind, you'll see what I do, so.
Mayor, may I ask of you to have the city manager and the chief of police to respond to her, what's your name?
Jennifer Morland. I ran for city commissioner.
Yeah, I remember that. Jennifer, have, respond to Jennifer on the specifics of what she has asked, please.
Will do.
Huntingbird Apartments.
And we will not arrest her.
Thank you.
I support that.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you for letting me speak my mind, and if you want the Fairness Act passed and you want to prove to the shadow of a doubt, you should do an experiment to see how many people are born gay.
Thank you now. Anyone else? Press please.
Yes, my name is Dr. Jessica Ferguson. I live at 161 East 11th. I'm currently the Director of Debate and a professor at Western Kentucky University. In 2006, I left my home of Texas and began a new life here in the city of Bowling Green. I love this city and the people in it, but I'm deeply saddened at the reluctance of this body to acknowledge the value of all of its residents by adopting the Fairness Ordinance. Many before me have spoken eloquently about the opportunities this city misses out on when it encourages its residents to move away in search of a community that openly accepts all individuals, regardless of their gender, identity, or sexual orientation. This loss is immeasurable and immense. If we cannot keep our own residents here, how do we expect to attract others to join our community, perhaps to fill the 6,000 jobs we have open? Having served on a search committee for the university, I can tell you firsthand that the lack of a Fairness Ordinance has made it extremely difficult to recruit and retain qualified candidates, especially when other colleges and universities and their municipalities across the state have a Fairness Ordinance, including Louisville, Lexington, Danville, and Moorhead. How do we expect people to take a job here if we can't even guarantee them fair housing or protection from discrimination in their new place of employment? Sadly, the same is true for our students. I actively recruit students, and on several occasions, I've been asked by prospective students and their parents about the protections afforded to LGBTQ persons in Bowling Green. It pains me to tell them that unlike their home cities, we do not have a Fairness Ordinance, to tell them that effectively, they are not welcome here. I also sit on the Board of a National Forensics Organization and an program planner for the National Communication Association. Currently, both of these organizations are experiencing pushback from its members who cannot or will not attend upcoming annual events because of the organization's choice to host them in cities deemed inhospitable to LGBTQ persons. The choice to reject the Fairness Ordinance sends a powerful message to national groups to avoid hosting events here or risk isolating its members, a move that only serves to further isolate the Bowling Green community. isolate the Bowling Green community. This body has repeatedly asked for evidence of discrimination resulting from the lack of a fairness ordinance, and while others have shared their gripping stories. Today, I ask you to think of the countless people who will never even step foot in Bowling Green because they've been told they are not welcome. How can we truly work for the betterment of the community, as you called for in today's invocation, while we actively shut our doors to some of the nation's most promising minds? Thank you.
Command? Anyone else? Anyone else? Alright, thank you. That's the end of our meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is August 15th, 2017. I'm sorry, just a moment.
Close session.
Oh, we have close-
No vote.
Yes, so, y'all excuse us. No vote.
No vote.